Great, so weed abatement program. We've been asked to look into ways to improve the program as we've had a few resident concerns over the past couple of years. And so I just want to go over the weed abatement program process. So, once a property is found to be non-compliant with our weed abatement ordinance, they are then entered into the weed abatement program. In January, every year, there is a hearing to declare weeds a public nuisance and residents have an opportunity to request that they be removed from the list, et cetera, et cetera. The county issues letters to all of these property owners prior to this meeting. And then, once council declares it a nuisance, property owners on the list have until April 30th to pick their weeds. In March, the county mails an additional letter as a reminder to let the property owners know. After April 30th, the county conducts inspections and then proceeds to abate non-compliant properties at the expense of the property owner. And then in August, we hold another hearing to assess the fees for the inspection and the abatement work. Once a property has been found to be compliant for three years in a row, they are allowed to be removed from the program. So, after speaking with the county and a few other cities, the primary concerns regarding the program from the residents are either that they were unaware of the need to abate their weeds, so it's more of an outreach concern, or they felt it was unfair that they were charged an inspection fee even though their weeds were properly abated. So even if a resident does abate their weeds within their timeframe before April 30th, they are charged for that initial inspection because this is a full cost recovery program. So to address these concerns, we recommend that we do supplemental outreach, where the city will send letters in addition to what the county sends in January and February. This has an estimated cost of $150. And we would also supplement outreach through the scene and social media. Here on this slide, we also recommend that we cover compliant inspection fees. This would address that concern that residents are paying for an inspection fee even though they abated their weeds. You'll notice the red here, I'm just giving an update that originally when we ran this analysis, the best number we had was 134 properties and it's been updated to 149 properties. And so if we were to do that, it would cost the city about an estimated $8,736 to pay the initial inspection fees of those who are compliant. So we would recommend that the council approve a total appropriation of 8,886 to supplement outreach and to cover the initial inspection fees for those properties that comply. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if there's any members of the public here that wish to speak on this item. I don't, I don't see any hands raised.
I'll make a public comment.
I didn't hear you what?
I'll make a public comment.
Oh. Okay, is that, is that okay?
I think last time-
Attorney, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just to how it affects her property personally.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. So, I think it's not a matter of whether the city should cover the fine or not. It's okay to pay the fine if one time that the weed was not clean. Like Kitty mentioned, I cleared it up before the examination date and then the county insists on putting my property on the list for another three years, even though it's all cleaned and I did it voluntarily. So it becomes a nuisance. The county program becomes a nuisance, not the weed. And that's unnecessary. It's really not helping. My house even far, it's very far away from any fire law. So yet, even, should we, should this become a punishment? Even when people complied, we still want to put them on this punishment list for three years. I think it's okay for residents to cover this one-time fee. They, they were not careful, they didn't clean up, now they did. So, the county did do the work and come out and examine. And yeah, I think the residents should pay the fee, but not for three years. Just for that one time, when one person might have been absent-minded. That's been more forgiving and not punishing our residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we will bring it back to council for discussion. So the member of the public mentioned the residents paying the one-time fee, but as I understand it, it would be the city that's paying that, is that true?
Under the current recommendation, yes.
Right, so I mean, $8,000. Personally, I think it's worth it considering the enormous amount of time this would save the city and the city council and the frustration it would save residents that might be put on this list. You know, if, if anyone of the public has been to the city council meetings when we've discussed weed abatement, it's very emotional and it's very long. And apparently, are we following the model of another city that are something similar to another city that I believe, is it Saratoga?
Yes, so after speaking to Saratoga, the outcomes and the difference in resident experience, this is effectively the difference. They have additional outreach and they will cover that initial inspection fee if they do end up complying.
Wonderful, I do see another member of the public has raised their hand on this. I'll go back there. Mooney Mahapatla, welcome, you have three minutes.
Hey, good evening mayor and council, could you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, quick, so on the weed abatement topic, last time I remember that long meeting where you all discussed this and I was there and I learned something, you know, there is an app where you can go and install and, you know, report any weed issues, you know, in and around your homes and whatnot, right? So, I followed through. I largely complained about two homes right across my home on McLealand Road, where the weeds are like, you know, grown almost to the waist level, really bad. And I took some pictures and, you know, posted as well. I got a complaint number and whatnot, so they acknowledged it. But I have no idea what was done after that, right? So, kind of confused, you know, how does this thing, whole thing works? Because I don't see any change in the fact that I reported it and they acknowledged it. And I go back to check, you know, on that, of that complaint on the app, nothing there, so.
Okay, thank you. So can the city staff comment on what happens when they receive a weed complaint?
So we do have the weed abatement manager on with us, Mo Kumre from the county. Perhaps, Mo, you can answer that question.
But this was a complaint to the city, is that true?
No.
Mooney?
No, no, this was, I, it's an app you-
Oh, to the county.
It's a county-developed app, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If, if you send me an email, I'll respond back to you with exactly what's happened with those properties. But normally, once we get the complaint, we'll do an investigation, verify the property. If we add the property to the program, until it's been through a public hearing, we can't actually take any action on the property. So, if we looked at it in this last year, which would have been the case, we could send pictures, send a letter to the property owner informing them that their property was non-compliant. But until we bring it back through a public hearing with you, council, we can't actually do any work on the property to correct the problem. We, we would have to wait on that. So, I can verify whether or not we've added it. If, if the caller wants to go ahead and send me an email with what those addresses are, I'll verify it and let him know exactly what the status is for each property. Most likely, we've added them, but I'll verify it.
So I did get the response at that time saying, you know, one of the properties was in the list, the other one was not, and somebody came and inspected and took pictures and confirmed back saying, you know, one is on the list, the other one is not, and they were going to add the second one as well. But after that, I have no idea what happened, that's-
Okay, if you send me that information, I'll be more than happy to verify it for you.
All right, thank you.
Email address, can I get the email address?
It's M-O-E dot K-U-M-R-E-
R-E, yeah.
At C-E-P dot S-C-C-G-O-V dot O-R-G.
Wow, O-R-G, okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mo. All right, so we can bring this back to council for anyone else that wants to comment on this. I see Rod, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the staff recommendation makes some sense. I understand the first time if people are caught in limbo, but I think then after that, right, we, we ought to be expecting that people learn. And so I think this is an appropriate accommodation and I'll move the staff report.
Great, yeah, I will second that. More discussion here.
I think you meant you'll move the staff recommendation, right, not the report?
Yeah, yeah, the recommendation, thank you.
Sure. I have no comments, I support it. I think more- No, hopefully this will help prevent, you know, some of our residents from getting on the list for three years. But, you know, as we can see from this past season, it's very important to do this, so. I'm all for the-
They will be on the list for three years, that's the nature of the program, but we will cover that inspection fee for them, so it won't cost them anything.
I'm sorry, was that, was that just for the first year or was that for the entirety of the duration?
Each year their complaint. Because as part of the program, and Mo can speak more to this, but in terms of monitoring to make sure the behavior and the compliance is repeated and continued, the county recommends keeping them on the list for the years for monitoring.
Okay, okay, well, thank you for that correction. So, I will support it. And then, and then remind me, the elevated cost is for people that are continually out of compliance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, great, yeah, so-
We're softening the blow the first time you get on, we're softening the blow for all three years, right?
Yes.
And then, but, but if you don't comply in year two or three, then it's on you, right? And then after three years, you roll off and hopefully, hopefully after that, you're good. I think this is going to take a lot of friction out of our system.
I'd like to clarify one thing, it's three consecutive years of voluntary compliance. So if they fail in year two, the clock starts over again.
Got it, yeah, that's right. And could you just talk to us about how the system has been working in Saratoga? Do you find it effective?
Well, Saratoga's, actually, you've taken a piece of Saratoga's to put in here. There's this completely different and they're still trying to work it out. It's not even completely developed yet.
So we may still have to tweak this some.
So just to kind of add more insight into that, Saratoga took a lot more of the program in-house. And based on conversations with Saratoga and the county, it seems to have, with two hands in the pot, trying to coordinate and work together is actually made it a little bit more difficult in terms of the administration portion of it. So what we're doing is we are implementing the end result for the customer, for the resident, without taking on the administrative portion.
That seems wise. I'll just say, I know of people now in places like Saratoga that can no longer get fire insurance for their homes. And so, you know, this is also in places in Tahoe. So, you know, these are, this fire danger is really very serious and it's appropriate that we help our residents comply. Because I mean, Darcy sentiment as well, so. Thank you, Mo, for your work. Katie, I had one question, if the property, I mean, this goes by parcel number, if the property changes hands, how does that work? Is it, does the new owner get another three years? Or does it, is it just once, a once-in-a-lifetime per APM?
It follows the property, not the, not the owner. So if, if the property was non-compliant two years ago, but was compliant for two years, the new owner this year would get one year and then it would go off the program if they kept it in compliance.
Right, I was just wondering, you know, in terms of the city of Cupertino paying that for three years, is it once ever per property? Or would be, if the property changed hands, would it reset and we would do it again?
It sounds as though that the clock does not reset with change in ownership.
Okay, so that, well, I know it doesn't reset in the county. I'm just wondering, you know, let's say a property is compliant for a bunch of years and then a new owner comes in and it's non-compliant again, they would not qualify for the city covering these fees because that property had its once-in-a-lifetime exemption.
So, how this would work is every year annually, everyone gets an inspection who's on the list. And so, at each inspection, if you're compliant, the city will cover that cost. If you're non-compliant, you are responsible for that cost along with the abatement costs. So that's how it would be handled on an annual basis.
Right, but you can't start going out of compliance again and expecting the city to cover it when you, when you-
If you were out of compliance that year, the city would not cover that inspection fee. It would be up to the property owner.
Okay.
All in years, if they complied after that, we would cover it for them, if they complied that.
Right, right, okay, okay, very good.
We're simply trying to, we're simply trying to incentivize compliance, as you can tell.
Right, okay, John, go ahead.
No, I'm happy enough, happy enough with this. It just seemed like there's an easier way, you know, the resident that said the punishment concept, oh, for three years, you're going to be subjected to this. I would have preferred that we only pay for the first year and it's just done on an annual basis. What I'm hearing is that this is a recommendation from Santa Clara County, this is not a law. And so we have the ability to say, in Cupertino, find a house that's non-compliant. And yes, there may be some confusion about the dates and times. So the first year, they've been notified, we pay it. After that, you've been told, make sure that you keep the weeds down and if you did get a notice, make sure you take care of it. But that subsequent three years, you know, I mean, every year they're going to get that $80 fine. Well, we're paying it for multiple years. It just, I think, fix the issue, not, you know, pay the mandate. So, but I'm okay with this, you know.
Right, well, I mean, essentially what you're suggesting is opt out of the whole county program, which other cities, many other cities don't participate in it, but, but we do. But if we wanted to do it, you said we'd have to do this all ourselves and not rely on the county.
Actually, there's only very few cities that don't participate in this county. We have a total of 12 jurisdictions besides the unincorporated county that participate in this program. Sunnyvale, Mountain View and Los Altos are the only non-participants.
Right, okay.
The other comment I want to make is that, and I think this is probably what I was competing initially, we would have to do this again next year because this motion is just for this year's budget allocation. It's not, it's not a permanent procedural change with regard to our, our covering this, this cost, this inspection cost. So if there's anything we can do to kind of make this more efficient for the next time, I think that would be a good idea. We have had a lot of these weed abatement program items. So, if we can somehow wrap it into the budget-
I think we can do that tonight. We just, you know, give the, in the motion that this is moving forward, we are going to do this. We're going to have supplemental outreach and we will cover that initial inspection fee for compliant properties and we will just budget as, as the budget process.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how that would necessarily work if we don't know exactly what the, what the per parcel-
So this would be the same way we budget every year annually. We have to make some estimates, how many people we think will be on the list, how, what compliance rate they might have. And of course, we're not going to pay more than is necessary, but we will put budget allocation in the annual budget.
Yeah, I mean, so that's what I'd recommend. I'd recommend an ongoing, as a friendly amendment to the motion, an ongoing budget allocation item for our upcoming budgets to, to cover this so that we don't have to add another agenda item in the future for this.
I support it. Yeah, yeah, that, that's a reasonable friendly amendment.
I will accept that friendly amendment.
Okay.
And to clarify, are we okay with the increased $8,886 amount as opposed to what's on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm fine.
What do we, what do we expect us to do in consequent, in subsequent years? Would we be, I mean, over time, people should learn, right?
Right, exactly, it should go down over time. Well, hopefully.
In year two, we're going to have more, in year three, we may have more, but then it might start going down, correct?
Well, your numbers, the numbers of properties in the program have actually gone down over my time here. We've been up as high as a couple, you know, 200, 300 properties in the program. We're down significantly now from where we were because of people paying the fees and they know what those costs are. So people are compliant and they're maintaining their property for those reasons. But you also still have some people who have never complied. We have some properties that have been on this program since I've been here for 15 years, the same properties. Yes.
And then you abate them and you charge them and it doesn't matter.
And they pay them every year.
And you, all you're doing is recovering your cost, to be clear, this is not punitive.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, if they're happy to pay those costs, I mean, even though they could probably do it, you know, for less on their own, well, that's fine, you know, they, they accept it. So, okay, so Darcy, you've got your motion and the friendly amendment and you agreed to the greater amount that is on, than is what is on the agenda.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we specify that amount? I see two amounts listed between the staff report and the agenda. The greater of those two is 8,046, and so what is it?
No, 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 no.
Right, I think it's more than that.
What is the greater amount again, Katie? 8,046, okay.
I'm sorry, once again?
8,886.
Okay, okay, great. I'd like to-
Well, I made a motion already, right, and I accepted a friendly amendment. Right, there was a motion and a second and the friendly amendment, so I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Stinks?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Your Sharf?
Aye.
The amended motion carries unanimously with Chow recused.
All right, we are on to item 22. Consider investigating potential acquisition of CUSD property located on Finch Avenue next to DJ Sedgwick Elementary School and discuss other potential steps to assist CUSD in light of potential school closures in Cupertino. Provide direction to staff on these issues, so can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you do have a member of the public with a raised hand. Did you want to go there first or after the?
I don't know, let's, no, let's have the staff report first.
Okay. So, if I could go to the second slide, which is basically the spreadsheet portion of the staff report, I just thought it might be interesting categories and informative for both council and the public to see the support that we do give to CUSD and in what categories here. So let me just go through these quickly. Safe routes to school, it is split, the total amount is split between CUSD and Fremont Union High School District. So we just approximated half and put the $300,000 against the CUSD costs. We do pay the majority of the cost for school resource officers for both districts. And so we've estimated that here for the CUSD folks. We do a lot of field maintenance so that our community members can also use those fields when school is not in session so that there's a direct benefit to community members in all of the neighborhoods, neighboring Cupertino schools. We do creek tours for third graders for the schools. This year, we are developing a virtual one for obvious reasons. So that costs us a little bit, but you can see that the main portion is field maintenance in exchange for the use of those fields. Cupertino Educational Endowment, the 5K run for the foundation is a little bit. And then, something that's been ongoing but kind of a new decision is the hiring of and replacement of a social worker commuter resource position with the schools. We split that with them and we have done so historically. And that's approximately $50,000 against the Cupertino books with another $50,000 against the CUSD books. For a total of a little over $2 million of assistance and cost deferment for CUSD. And that's basically all I have to report. I'm happy to enter into conversations with the district superintendent on anything in the future we could do to help them out during this time. I also have invited her to the meeting here so that she can speak on her own budget items and any other topics she thinks is relevant. Stacy McAfee Yao is on as well as their board member and chair, I believe, Lori Cunningham. So thank you both for joining, thank you for being here. And I'm going to turn it over to Stacy for any additional information you'd like to offer.
Well, thank you and thank you for the opportunity to share and certainly are interested in continuing our partnership with the city and expanding that partnership, partnership if possible in many means. I'm sure as many of you are aware, there is a lot of talk in the community and a lot of anxiety in the community as we've become, our discussions and they've furthered along with school closures have come to light. And it really has been a long-term process over the last four to five years as we continue to address our budget and in a real simple format. We really are inadequately funded from the state. We're one of the few districts in the entire state, but more importantly, in the surrounding Bay Area, where our, our funding comes from a revenue level versus a basic fund, our basic aid based on property tax. And so while we're surrounded by districts that are able to provide a very high per pupil cost, we are one of the lowest funded. We have been able to overcome those struggles throughout the years with various strategies, doing a lot of leasing partnerships. We have attempted to bring in Cooper Doodle, our preschool programs. So we really have been strategic over the years in trying to continue to provide ways for revenue enhancements. We are at a point now where, as we look into our outlying years, we have to provide to the state a three-year fiscally solvent budget that's approved by the board in June. And as we're looking in our outlying years, with our current funding situation and our trajectory, we would not have a solvent budget in the outlying years. It really has been the discussion over the last year when we went out and did some public listening sessions, heard from the communities. We formed a citizen advisory committee last spring, but unfortunately, due to the COVID, we delayed. The original intent was the CAC, the community advisory committee was going to be meeting in the spring and bringing recommendations to the board in June and then having that opportunity to really discuss and decide where we move forward. That was delayed, so we were able to start those meetings this fall. And last two weeks ago, our CAC presented a plan to the board and it really was just a plan outlining some options for the board to consider and to discuss. We know that what we tasked the CAC with was a very small amount of what we're really targeting for our fiscal solvency. However, I think anytime that we talk about school closure, there certainly raises a lot of emotion, a lot of anxiety in the community. You know, and, and in all fairness, I think we've been talking about it for the last four to five years. We've had a lot of communications, we have board meetings, we have town hall meetings. But I don't know that the extent of the severity of it was really expressed or heard by our community. And so really trying now to share that story with the community that we have explored and attempted so many strategies that we feel like we're in a position. Our enrollment is declining drastically. We've had our projections over the years and we've continued to see our decline each year. With this year, we reduced even further based on COVID. We're assuming is a big component of that, but we continue to decline. Our demographers have outlined the following years where we're going to continue into this decline. And so with our funding from the state, we actually rely on students for that funding. We're receiving an amount per student, so every student that we lose, we lose money. And so that's really what's dived us into this further fiscal insolvency into the future. Closing schools, again, there is no decisions that have been made, no schools have been determined to be closed. It really is generated out of the work of our, our community, citizens advisory committee, I'm sorry, that presented to the board with some options to start that entire discussion. So this Thursday at our board- um, that presented to the board with some options to start that entire discussion. So this Thursday at our board meeting, we will begin. This will be the first time really that our board has an opportunity to talk about school closures and what does that look like? Um, part of those other components, when you ask about, you know, where where some of those partnerships and and helps from the city can come from. We will, in all likelihood, be going out for a parcel tax in the spring. We haven't determined the amount or the size or the type. But we really would want the support of our entire community so that we can continue to have our fiscal solvency. Um, so again, it really is the exploration of how can we be three years fiscally solvent and into the future? Because continually, we've each year had to come back and do cuts and reductions and we can't continue to operate that way. We're not able to continue to provide the education that we all know and deserve in in Cupertino. We are such a high-quality education system. And we've been able to mitigate those issues over the year, but there is that concern as we move forward with the current budget system that we won't be able to maintain that. Um, based on, based on that, it, I don't want it to be all the doom and gloom because some very positives have come out in that our community is now much more aware. Um, engaging, and I I think we need to use that momentum to really to pass that parcel tax. And I know in reference tonight, there's, we do have property that a current small piece that is is vacant. Um, certainly interested in um Deb and I can have more conversations as far as what could that property and how could we partnership with that piece of property? Um, as well as some other means that maybe we can continue to work together and support. So I appreciate the opportunity to share that story with you.
All right, thank you. So we, before we bring it back to um city council, we will go to public comment. I see two, two hands raised. Kitty's hands went down. So now first is um Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Just ask some clarifying question, like whether the a final decision will be made made on November nineteenth. It's this kind of vague. Do we at least know that or could that could potentially be made?
Oh, is it okay for me to address?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, that one question, okay.
Um, so I think there is some misperception with that. There is, we do have three upcoming board meetings in November. We've actually added additional board meetings. We've added one for November tenth. We have our regular board meeting on November fifth and a board advance on November nineteenth. So we have posted those dates as dates that the discussion is going to occur. Um, it it really is the board's first opportunity to discuss in November fifth. We have not set that no November nineteenth, they need to make a decision or take any action. It really will be the evolving of the discussion. We have two board meetings set up in December and I I think we've been pretty open in saying that we would add any additional board meetings if needed during that timeframe. So um to, I guess a quick answer to that is no, November nineteenth is not a deadline.
Saying there is a deadline somehow that you need to make a decision, which is why we're without all. It's uh urgent. There is urgency to that. So there is not.
Yeah, I I'm happy to clarify that because I think that is circulating out there in the community that this magic, November nineteenth, and that's not.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. All right, I want to go public comment now. Um, Jennifer, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Steve, um, can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yes, I'm aware of where this property is. It is in Rancho Rinconada. I had concerns. I had heard that Sedgwick or Hyde uh junior high could be on the closure list, which I was completely stupefied when I heard that because these are the only schools to tri-school area back nineteen fifty on the east side. You have uh Hyde Junior High Middle School, whatever you want to call it. Uh, Sedgwick Elementary and um the Cupertino High School are a unit. They're as much of a tri-school as the Monovista Kennedy. Uh, Monovista High School and the other, uh, I think it's the elementary that's there. I would not recommend closing either Hyde or Sedgwick. And in terms of the parcel, um, very familiar with this piece of property. Um, the one that you're considering for a park, I would be very, very concerned. Um, I think it's worth exploring, obviously, but I think we need to make sure that Sedgwick is not on the target list for closure. If if the school boards are intending to close Hyde or Sedgwick, I do not want the property sold. It has, this, I'm talking about the schools here. I do not want those school properties sold. They can be leased out. They can be held for potential because we have Valco coming online. And I believe that Hyde is the target junior high for the hundreds of students that are supposed to be coming out of Valco as well as Cupertino High School is going to have to hold all those students. Plus, the district goes all the way down to uh Stevens Creek Boulevard. It goes into West San Jose. So what about all those people? It goes all the way down to Kylie. A lot of people aren't aware of that. So I do not recommend closing Hyde or Sedgwick. We will fight to keep those schools open. If you all want to pursue potentially looking at the Sedgwick property, that's an interesting um alternative. There's a very, very large redwood on the property, which I think should be preserved. But I do, I, my first concern is Sedgwick and Hyde and Cupertino High School. We, they are integral, in, they're an integral historic part of the east side of Cupertino. And I'm very concerned when I hear people saying capriciously that we're gonna close Sedgwick or Hyde because we need to look at that. Everyone is gonna be concerned about their schools. But I, I do not want, if you have to close those schools, I do not want the property sold and I.
Okay, finish up, Jennifer.
I do not want housing on our school property at all.
All right.
Give up the parkland if you're gonna put housing on our.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're out of time. Okay, um, next we have um Mooney Manapatla, welcome.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and uh council members. So hopefully you can hear me. So.
We can.
Yeah, so I'm representing myself as a citizen of Cupertino. So um I've been spending a lot of time, you know, trying to analyze how we landed in the CSD funding issue, right? I've been comparing neighboring school districts, you know, our taxing situation and the mix and, you know, who's paying how much for schools and all that. So I have two asks, you know, as city leaders, I know this is a CSD issue, but you know, it spreads across six cities. So every city has to help out the school district. We are at least, you know, majority of the that school district, so I would highly recommend, you know, city do something on this front. I have to ask, one, um, we do have to pass, you know, square foot base tax in in stuff, you know, parcel tax. This is very important because, you know, I just did some math. The McLaren Terrace Apartment, uh, they pay just three dollars per dwelling on the parcel tax front. Whereas I'm paying two hundred and fifty dollars even though I don't have kids in school. That's a huge disparity. And then I also look at, you know, um, the property tax. I'm paying, you know, four thousand seven hundred dollars in a property tax to CUSD, right? So almost twenty thousand dollars tax, you know, on uh twenty-five percent of that goes to CUSD. And I look at, you know, the McLaren Terrace Apartment, that whole thing is paying only ninety-eight dollars per unit, property tax. So property tax and parcel tax combined, they're only paying a hundred and one dollar per household. And I'm paying, you know, five thousand dollars for my home, even though I don't have kids. We need to fix this disparity. So please help pass, you know, square foot base tax. Fight the real estate interest, and if you have to fight it, but we need to do right for our schools. Second, if there is any way that, you know, you can influence the kind of housing that gets built in Cupertino, it doesn't matter whether it's, you know, single-family homes or, you know, or townhomes or condos, if they can be for ownership home, they help schools. I did a math, a condo, a comparable condo in the city is paying three thousand two hundred dollars to school. A thousand square foot condo, a thousand square foot apartment in McLaren Terrace is only paying hundred dollars. We gotta fix that. The way to fix that is if you can encourage, you know, for ownership homes, you know, uh every way possible. I know there is a city in Texas called Copel. They only allow, you know, for ownership homes that you cannot build, you know, rentals there. And I don't know if that's possible in our city. I would like you guys to look at it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mooney. Thank you for not using all your time. Next, we have um Suda Kasamseddy. Welcome, Suda. Um, let's see, yeah, we, go ahead, Suda. Suda, are you there? Okay, um. One, one more chance for Suda to speak and then we'll move on. Suda, are you? Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, uh, good evening, council members. This is Suda Kasamseddy, candidate for Cupertino School Board, and I'm representing myself today. We all know that our district has a budget deficit and looking at potential multiple school closures. Uh, of course, there is a huge uproar from the community and we are working with the school board uh to defer the decision and, you know, how the community can help. Uh, while we are proposing long-term solutions like square footage for parcel tax and while we are looking into other viable solutions, I wanted to take this opportunity and personally request the council to extend their help in any which way. One of the suggestions I see in the agenda today is discussion about Finch property. I would love to see this collaboration happen between the city and the school district. We need all hands on the deck to help our school district. And if this collaboration, um, you know, can help in minimizing or avoid school closure, we should definitely consider looking into it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being brief. Uh, next we have um um Xiao Ha Yang, welcome.
Um, thank you, Mayor, and um, uh, I have a um some um question and maybe suggestion. Um, so obviously, the Apple Park is generating a lot of revenue, um internal property tax for um Santa Clara Unified. Uh, I wonder if there's any possibility that Cupertino Unified could grab a bigger share. Uh, I I I'm I'm not expert in le- legal or any of those aspects. Um, but is there any um reason or um m- maybe we could, or legal ground that we could get a bigger share for our school district? Um, so so I guess that is, um, it it looks like that they have more revenue for Santa Clara. Uh, but on the other hand, we are so short and that campus does incur a lot of traffic on our side, Cupertino side particularly. So um, I I just wonder if you have looked into that from um legal point of view or not?
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I, this is something that um C U, CUSD could answer, but I I'm sure Santa Clara Unified would not want to give up any of that revenue.
I think it's worth looking into it, right?
Okay, um, next we have um Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a long-term resident here in Cupertino, and my son went through the CUSD schools. I am here tonight to object to the timing of this agenda item on this eve of an election. Why is this item being brought up at this point? It's not on the city work plan. There's no budget for it. And until tonight, there's been no outreach to CUSD. The declining school enrollment has been known for years. So why this rush to put it on the agenda? Yes, Cupertino needs more housing to increase student enrollment. And Cupertino has fought, has failed to provide the needed housing. That's not gonna be solved tonight. But the city can't initiate a parcel tax, whether it's square footage or another or a flat rate. Please make that clear to the public that there are two different jurisdictions and the city cannot make decisions for CUSD. I object to members of this council politicizing this long-term problem. Tonight is not the time to have a rational conversation. Thank you.
Can I respond? This is not a long-term problem. I spent the last two days digging through all the budget product projection from CUSD from two thousand eight up until March twenty twenty. The multi-year projection by CUSD has shown that we will have twenty to thirty million dollars ending balance even in twenty twenty-three. We were pretty healthy despite declining enrollment. CUSD staff has been able to manage even with very much lower than the average state funding. However, the talk of suddenly closing five schools, it wasn't even known to the public. It wasn't announced to the public. It was somehow, I I also checked all of the email blast from CUSD. School closure wasn't mentioned until October twenty-third, the day after the presentation to the board. Let's be clear, this is not a long-term discussion.
So, ca- councilmember Chow, can we continue with the public comment? We can bring your comments back when you get back to council.
Let me finish, declining enrollment.
This is non-procedural.
Uh, I believe we can respond to public comments.
Yeah, just a brief response. Yeah, a brief response.
Yeah, so we are, underfunding is a real issue. Declining is not because we have been overcrowded. Now we are finally down to a really healthy enrollment level. Thank you.
So am I allowed to comment? Or would you like to tell me when would be an appropriate time to comment?
Um, thanks, Lori. I think what we'll do is we'll continue on with public comment and then come back to, yes, you should be able to respond.
That would be great. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for asking. Mr. Mayor, do you want to go back?
Sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Um, so we heard the superintendent say that there's been discussion about the issues with funding and and the dire straits of the district for the last four or five years. There's a whole timeframe that's a bit disturbing to me and I in, some of it is related to the purchase that the school district made. And I've spoken to this at city council members, then, excuse me, meetings over the years. In two thousand fourteen, there was an agenda item to discuss what was labeled as the Sedgwick Expansion. That was in December of two thousand fourteen. I went to that meeting hoping to learn what it meant and to speak if necessary. It was actually not even removed from the agenda, but it just wasn't talked about. So I communicated after that with the people that were in the district, the correct office, they're no longer there. And then I was sent this multi-hundred-page document about the property. And it just kind of was under the radar. They actually got into contract to purchase the property in two thousand sixteen. There was a long escrow because there was studies to be done. And they took possession and owned the property in January of two thousand seventeen. That is within those four or five years of worrisome budget. And I questioned at the time, why are they spending over four million dollars for a piece of property when they don't have money and they have money problems? But I consoled myself by saying, look, it's a smart move. That property has been not available. Suddenly it is. Okay, so this is protection for what is going to happen in the east side of town so that the school could be truly expanded. Now, during those meetings, um, the Measure H guy or the Bond H guy was saying that after purchasing the property, they must get, the California Department of Education has to approve any use of the land. So I'm a little concerned that there's even a discussion about possibly selling it at potentially a loss. And does the city really have the money to do it? I think there are other ways to support, and I also want to remind everyone, Cupertino is not the only city that has students in this district. I hope if this discussion is taking place and there's really some attempt to collaborate and get some help for the district until they can get a bond, uh, excuse me, a parcel tax pass that will cover the problems, that other cities are doing the same thing. It's not fair to put it all onto Cupertino. I'm not saying that you are. Um, but the further discussion to be had. but a further discussion to be had.
Please finish up.
2014, when there were members, our then superintendent and members of the board were pushing and promoting politically a new school that was going to potentially be, or thought to be needed.
Lisa, you're out of time, please finish up.
Okay, well, it's just this, the last six years have been a total mixed message.
Thank you.
Coming down to the wire.
Thank you, okay, Vikram.
Hi, fellow council members on the city. I'm speaking in my personal capacity here. I don't have very specific opinions about what to be done with the subject property. I think there are other folks who have more information, but I wanted to highlight a few things. CUSD operates about 30% of its classrooms in Portables. Most of the schools are clearly above capacity. As we build more to fulfill our RENA requirements and with all the newer laws coming down from Sacramento, which will enable more high-density construction, we expect a lot more parents with children to move into Cupertino because of the quality of the schools. So it's absolutely critical that we maintain and preserve the space or land which CUSD has so we can accommodate what will come down the line over the next two decades. So given that fact, I would really urge the city to consider all options so that the land remains in public hands and it's not sold to somebody who's in a private hand because we will need the space. The second point I wanted to make was that the city should try as much as what it legally can to help CUSD bridge any gap which will enable us to continue with our existing capacity, a physical capacity, until we can get a permanent fix to the structural problems aiding the district. At the end of the day, you know, our taxes, some of them go to the city, some of them go to CUSD, but all we're looking for, we all look for services from both the entities and many of the people won't even know that CUSD is a separate entity from the city because we sort of assume that it's a service provided by the state. So I would urge you to find all legal options to help CUSD out while they figure out a plan to fix it. It may be a bridge loan, it may be a direct contribution, it could be a contribution via CEE, it could be a call to action to our local industrial partners, the commercial, the chambers of commerce, or the residents. But drive something so CUSD is not forced to take decisions to close the schools when we are already overcrowded and we expect a lot more people to become residents of Cupertino over the next two decades. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next hand up is Li Ping Sui. I hope I pronounced your name right. Welcome, Li Ping.
Yeah, hi, this is Li Ping and I'm a parent of Meyerhold students. So the Meyerhold school was proposed to be one of the schools going to be closed. And here I have a question. I just wanted to understand why it is CUSD. It's not like, it's not like the poorest district, absolutely not. But it's not, it's not either the richest area like Saratoga, like Palo Alto either. I think they also have like the enrollment decoration as well, but why it's CUSD, why it's Cupertino? That's, that's something I really, I really feel confused. We recently moved to Cupertino for the high education quality and we paid a huge amount of mortgage that we tried to cover and, but for the high quality of education, we think it's worth it. But it's quite disappointing, like the school is going to be closed. I just want to understand why, why it's Cupertino. Thanks.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I think when we get back to having the board president speak, she can address that. We have one more hand raised. Kitty Moore, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Paul and council members Chow, Singz and Willie. I'm Kitty Moore, Planning Commission Chair, representing myself only and my kids attended Cedwick. I participated in a large rally on Saturday to save CUSD's schools, which was reported on by KTSF Channel 26. CUSD originally was looking at closing John Muir about a year ago and now has 12 schools slated for potential closure, which is greater than 50% of the district schools. About 46% of CUSD parcels are within Cupertino and the remainder are divided between five other cities. In March of 2020, CUSD tried to pass a $125 parcel tax, which would have yielded 4.25 million. CUSD could not adequately communicate their need to the public. This site at Cedwick could cost between $3 and $5 million, which while close to the CUSD ballot measure in the spring, CUSD is now showing reports of the need of between $24 and $26 million without a clear explanation of why their need is now about six times what they asked for previously. Valco was mentioned. It would generate approximately 650 students. Cedwick Elementary stated foreclosure, even though it is not under enroll. For other potential steps the city can do to help CUSD, the city can locate the expected 6,500-unit RENA allocations in the areas which have declining enrollment, provide support for a per-square-foot of build-out area parcel tax, which should be build-out area and not land area, and provide education and information about the actual impacts of developments, including why community benefits are not necessarily beneficial. Please reference the FUHSD report stating that the square footage parcel tax is fairer than the flat rate per parcel tax. We need accurate and consistent data from CUSD, which they have thus far been unable to provide. What they have done, however, is upset families from all across CUSD during a pandemic when families have been under incredible stress already. Supporting CUSD is a great idea, but we need to be confident in the information that we receive. I thank our city council leadership for bringing forth this issue. We are a community and I am glad we are finally acting like one here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kitty. Next, we have Yang Hui Mo, welcome.
Yes, thanks. So I have questions. So first, can the CUSD, the decision to close schools being made after the parcel tax result come out next spring? And if the $5 million to $7 million shortage mentioned in Lincoln meeting today, if it's not for the next semester budget, then the school district should postpone any closing school decision to next semester? And I also have some other questions. So why is, I'm not so sure if the, the school district and Cupertino city or the surrounding cities, if you have enough effort comparing in Sacramento or the local and the state representatives about the CUSD, the budget crisis? Because apparently, CUSD is per the California LCFF. So it would have only 8,600 per student per year. So that's not enough for the school district to run efficiently. And it's also far, far below state average, 10,000 and national average 10,000. And half of the funding per student comparing to the school district, which get more from LCFF funding. On the other hand, I think if the enrollment keeps declining to around 13,000 students in CSD, then CSD could switch to local control accountability plan, the LCAP, the Basics Aid. So it would not rely on the state funding anymore. And one more, one less student below 13,000 would give more spending money per student. So I think, and another question is, if enrollment keep declining, is there enough school district staff reduction to reflect the smaller students enrollment in the school district? So, and please consider moving to square footage tax to element the equity between the parcels, which have a lot of development on them, generating many students and a very small parcels with beetle student generation. Please make all the efforts to adjust the budget deficit before can even consider closing any CSD schools. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next is Lily Lee, welcome.
Hi, Mayor, thank you. I just decided calling after putting my kids to bed. So just quickly go, I think, first of all, I didn't, I think I already hear Kitty Moore and another Hui parent echoed a lot of what I want to say. And I just want to add, we want more transparency even earlier, like in enrollment status. Like we didn't know we are only opening once a day and I also heard there are waiting lists. Our kids were turned away. We want to know more why the school district want to make this kind of decisions. We have good like open enrollment program. We can attract more kids here like previous year. So I'm really puzzled why the school district want to turn away kids who want to come to our school. And I'm also calling for more transparency, like the, the, the closing school or the funding planning because I still, I'm not convinced why the parcel tax discussion will come after closing schools. I think it should be come before, right? If we can solve this from, for example, square foot parcel tax, then it will be good mechanism moving forward. Why they want to push the clothing school before this kind of solution? And lastly, I, I think this is really a stressful time already. I, I hope the school board can consider postpone and also discuss with more community involvement on discussing what alternative solution we can do as a community together because we are here for the schools. If the school district is in trouble, we want to, as a big community family, we want to do it together, not like the last minute tells, tell us, this is, this is going to close your school. This is really shocking to us. And yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lily. Next, we have David Fung, welcome, David. David, are you there? Oh, let me, okay. Hey, David?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, let me reset the timer, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is David Fung. I'm current Planning Commissioner, but I'm speaking on my own tonight. I also have served previously as the oversight, on the Oversight Committee, the Bond Oversight Committee and as the committee chair for the CUSD school bond. And I'm the current co-president of the Oversight Committee for the FUHSD, both bond and parcel tax. I think we're all concerned as a community for the goodwill of the districts and the schools. I actually, having, having been closely involved with the administration over the ever many years now, I would really actually say that current and previous administrations have made enormous efforts. Both the administrations and the boards, the superintendents, have made enormous efforts to try to communicate the situation about funding in the, in the schools. And this has been over a course of many years. So it's really, there's kind of no surprise. The part that's been a surprise has been the very, very rapid, you know, there's been a very rapid decline in enrollment and that's reflective of changes in demographics and the way people kind of choose to live their lives today. Sometimes it's frustrating. School districts by their nature need to be somewhat reactive to the things that are happening around them. They can't control how many kids are coming to school. They can't control how much money they get. So it's a challenge, it's a challenge where you really have to scramble to make, to make things work. I think the actions that the school, that CUSD are taking today, they're difficult and painful, but they're the right kinds of things. When you have an enormous drop in the number of students, that really does cause you to have to question, are we at the right size? If we're going to have to make changes, whether it's boundary changes or school closures, you really need to handle that in a community way. And they've done that by trying to put together a CDC, a CAC and give them direction to try to focus on the things that are critically important. I, I think that the most important thing really is for us to work together as a community and rather than having kind of the clashing, the kind of clash that we're seeing today, I really would encourage you to give, to give CUSD the opportunity to determine where they want to try to go and then really try to support it at that point. They aren't, they didn't come to the city looking to sell anything. They, with regard to parcel taxes, this has actually been studied very, very closely, even just in 2018 by, by FUHSD to look at a square foot parcel tax. That's not really something that can happen in this community today. And having a city council hearing isn't going to really change that. So I would really, really encourage you, allow the people who are the closest and who know the most to get an opportunity to determine what they want to do and then please try in every way you can to support their, their decision. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Fomia Romero, welcome.
Hello, thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk here, Mr. Mayor. I'm a parent of two kids. One is going to the Meyerholds and one is going to the Miller. And I'm here to raise awareness more so than anything else because Meyerholds is the one which is going to have a biggest impact because of the CAC recommendation, where they want to make it as a CLIP-only school. Whereas neighborhood needs to be, you know, divided among multiple schools, including Eaton, where it is, you had a cross-bolinger for that and then it is going to affect your middle school too because Eaton school kids will go to Lawson. So this is something, all the CAC plan is put together where it is not saving any money because Meyerholds can handle 700-plus kids and they're going to give it to CLIP, who has 400 students. Where does the math work there? And why break up Meyerhold's kids? They already have formed a bond and they have, they don't even, they will miss out on Miller and eventually, I don't know, if the CEO's, you know, boundary, if it changes, then even Lindbergh may not have the chance. This is ratio, you know, this is discriminating against a large diversified group to support one program, whereas you are not getting anything out of it financially. Actually, you're going to get, have a negative in the sense that you're spending lot more for smaller number of kids, if you know what I mean. So this is completely discriminatory and why not give a smaller center for CLIP if they really wanted their own center? Why take Meyerholds, which is big? And the entire premise of public school, isn't it about having a neighborhood school? Isn't that the American concept? And here we are going to give more importance to a CLIP program, whereas you had to kick, you know, give the neighborhood a, you know, nothing, actually. It's, it's a disadvantage for them. It's, it just doesn't make sense. I really want city council to understand the situation because this is unique to Meyerholds. It's not related to any other school. So please help us with the board. I know they are working hard. I am really thankful for CUSD for working on this, but we didn't have good representation around CAC because none of us knew this during the pandemic days and this all happened during that time. So please, if possible, reconstitute your CAC or give us another way, but, but don't kick out neighborhood school, you know, program, school from the Meyerholds. Thank you. That's, I just need city board, you know, council members to help us with this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Kristin Lin. Welcome, Kristin.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm super excited to see this agenda put on to the city council meeting. That we finally, finally can see there is a possibility the city partner with our school district. I also want to echo what Lori said. Let's think big, think outside of the box because closing schools should be the last resort. We should think about all kind of opportunity before we do. Because closing school should be the last resort. We should think about all kind of opportunity before we do uh, closing school, which is will impact a lot, a lot of families. Um, and then also I want to bring out the Fremont Union High School District Survey information has been subject to a Public Information Act request. We need to more transparency and accurate fact, not the threat. If our current people cannot get the parcel tax passed, then why not at least consider alternatives? I support people who work with us, not certainly us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Next we have Peggy Griffin. Welcome Peggy. You have three minutes.
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, good evening, uh, city council members and staff. And I I want to support the square foot parcel tax. I um it is the, and I want to be specific that it should be based on improvements and not lock size, because as the city grows and the density grows, you want this tax to grow and support the schools with more and more um revenue. Um, I also want to point out that if the schools close, and this is critical, we lose our parks. And we can't afford to lose the parks. So the city needs to be involved in what happens to these schools and do as much as you can to help the district get through this. Um, also, the item is about the Finch property. It's situated right at between an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school. This is ideal for some kind of collaborative work between the city, the and and both school districts. Um, you could do a teen center, you could do um quite a few things that would support that area and also support the schools. So anyway, um, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. Um, next we have um Shridhar um Shrahati, welcome. Now you disappeared. Hold on, see it.
He's back.
He's back, okay. Um, well, I don't see him on my attendee list, though.
No, no, I'm here. Are you able to hear me?
Go ahead. Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor. Uh, this is Sridha Shrahati, um, and thank you for letting me talk here. My child goes to Dilbert Elementary. I'm deeply concerned, like many other parents on this call, about the decision to close some of our C U S D schools. I I personally feel it's kind of overreaction to the situation. And we should strongly consider other options of increasing the revenue and not letting our schools close. I had a brief chat with Vice Mayor Darcy Powell yesterday evening. Uh, he was um um, very, I mean, kind enough to call me, uh, return my call. I've been trying to reach out to you all officials, just so that we can get enough attention to this problem. I personally feel there are other ways to increase the revenue and address the problem rather than, you know, taking this nuclear option of closing schools. The entire reason why when we decided to kind of buy a house here, the only key consideration was the schools, elementary, middle being Miller and high school being Lindbrook for Dilbert Elementary. That's the only reason why we live in this community. Nothing else really matters or defines Cupertino other than good schools. So I frankly feel uh feel that there are better options and request for your help.
Okay, thank you. And that is all the hands raised um that I see. So now we can bring it back. I know, um, Lori, you wanted to probably address many of those um callers' concerns. So Lori, are you there?
Yeah.
There you go, okay.
Back on, there we go. Um, so I will try to keep my comments brief, um, respectfully uh to this body. Uh, C U S D is its own jurisdiction. With its own highly qualified and skilled executive management and with its own elected officials to set policy, make budgeting decisions, and to provide oversight on behalf of all six of our cities and our fifteen thousand seven hundred learners. They are our top priority. The C U S D serves a majority, but not all, of the city of Cupertino, as well as portions of Sunnyvale, San Jose, Saratoga, Los Altos, and Santa Clara. We are currently serving, as I said, approximately fifteen thousand seven hundred students this year, after peaking out in twenty fourteen fifteen uh during that school year above nineteen thousand one hundred students. So from fifteen thousand seven hundred this year, uh, looking back five years to the fourteen fifteen school year, nineteen thousand one hundred students. Um, the appropriate forum on the appropriate agenda for conversations about the decisions to be made around planning for the chronic and severe underfunding of our school district, as well as our ongoing and significant decline in enrollment, is in the Cupertino Union School District Board meetings, town halls, district committees such as our budget advisory, citizens advisory, parent advisory, and other district-run forums, so that our entire community of stakeholders from all of our cities know and can participate in these forums. We appreciate your partnership on the programs Deb was able to outline very, very much, and we appreciate your partnership in budget solving sized solutions. Um, as you know, our board is looking very closely at going out for a parcel tax in the beginning of the twenty uh twenty twenty one fiscal year in the first half. Um, and we very much welcome and look forward to your partnership in helping us there with that effort. Um, we are open to utilizing uh the skilled staff of both of our jurisdictions to facilitate conversations about future collaborations and potentials. In the future, we'd appreciate the appropriate chain for each of us as elected officials to follow in reaching out through our respective staffs before placing an open-ended item on your agenda. As we saw in this forum tonight, this forum is an inappropriate venue for us being able to respond to and address the nature of the issues at hand and to respond to all of our stakeholders from all six of our cities together. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the item on the agenda was not supposed to be open-ended. It was if you read the agenda, we wanted to talk about the Finch property on Phil and Finch, and I know for many years, the city was interested in that um property to use it as a park or other public space. And the fact that C U S D bought it and it is now unused, we thought that be possible to collaborate um on that piece of property and possibly provide some small amount of one-time uh money to the district. So I do apologize, it was not intended to be this open-ended session with um the comments about various school closings. Excuse me, I'm talking, can you finish, please?
I proposed this item, it was mis-titled.
Okay, so um, yeah, I mean, that's where that came from, but I appreciate what you said, it was not intended to be open-ended. And you're absolutely correct, this is really a, um, to talk about all the school closures is really a C U S D board item, not a Cooper City Cupertino City Council item. And I know that um our city manager will work with C U S D uh to discuss the this property if C U S D is interested in um in collaborating on it. Um, so, yeah, I'll bring it back to.
Thank you.
And if I may, I I thank you and I appreciate that. I think Deb and I would be happy to to have some conversations and and to have that discussion. And we do welcome the the opportunity to do partnerships in the future.
Right, and I know when, you know, the city bought the Lawrence Midi property uh a few months ago, it finally closed after years and years. And every time that was brought up, there were other council members saying, yeah, that's not a great location for a park, but it's the only land we have. And but it was always brought up about that uh piece of land on Phil and Finch as well. And um, I know the school district bought it, you know, I think the city might have wanted to buy it as well. Maybe this is a chance we can collaborate and I'm leave it to you and Deb to to talk about that. Um, so anyway, we'll bring it back to the city council now. Um, I know um Councilmember Chow, he wanted to speak, so so go ahead.
Hey, sorry for I interrupted you. So I proposed this item at first. I was just hoping to explore options that the city could help. Um, Finch property is one option. I didn't mean to make this like the main item, we can only talk about this item. That wasn't the intention. Somehow, somewhere, I don't know how come this title became um Finch was the main topic, somehow the other topic were secondary. But still, the intention was, how can city help? What options are there? And I don't know why we have to be limited to only Finch. And I know it's only explore an option, so I think what we need is, does the city have consensus to say, let's take a look at that option? I don't know. And then even if we do, I know there might be issues we need to look at. I like Peggy's idea that it could be a teen center. I was originally thinking, even if the city purchased the property, we have to make sure that there is some clause in there that the C U S D has the first right of refusal to buy it back. Because I think all of us will not be on the council forever. There will be new council members who might have different ideas. And they might sell that property to someone other than the C U S D. That's not something I would like to see happen. So even in in case the city purchased property, we have to make sure that when the city changes its mind in the future, C U S D uh has a right on to purchase back. Or maybe it will be a partner, a co-owner of some kind, I don't know. Um, that's, we hope to explore. As for whether we could talk about Cupertino issues, well, I think we have two-by-two meeting with two city council members and two Cupertino Cupertino board members. We uh talk about a lot of updates from the city, from the school, we collaborate together. So the idea that we cannot even discuss important issues that's related to our schools. And that's absurd. I think we can discuss. Of course, we can, we don't make decisions. And I think a lot of public head should know that this is C U S D board's decision to make. And the council can only make sure we help the residents to understand the situation, help clarify things and see if there is a willingness for the council to help, or at least we can help publicize the parcel tax. Of course, what I would now like to see is the Cupertino board to put some bike project on their agenda. That should not happen. Um, yeah. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Rod, go ahead.
So, as I think we all know by now, but just for those who don't, as a school district under the state of California's L C F F program, C U S D receives funding on a per-student basis. And this year, I'm I'm told by Lori that it's, she's here still, so she can probably correct me, eighty-six hundred dollars per student. Um, so basically, the the economics of C U S D is more students means more money to cover fixed costs, and less money means those fixed costs get really squeezed, and that's the situation that C U S D finds itself in. Uh, the average number of students has declined an average of five hundred and fifty students every year uh in the last four years, and the projection going forward in the next five years uh shows a decline of four hundred and ninety per year. So you just take this year at five, the the average over the last four, five hundred and fifty students um, less uh this year is four point three million dollars less in money. And that's a lot of money by any standard, and certainly by the city's standards. So, you know, we look at the two million that we contribute and think about the magnitude of the problem they have. Um, and so as as Lori said, the elected C U S D school board is in charge of schools, and there's there's one and only one major thing we can help, we can do to help rectify C U S D's structural deficit. And that's to make more room for families by planning and entitling more housing in Cupertino rather than blocking it. So, for example, more housing for seniors can help free up homes for families with kids while allowing while allowing seniors to downsize in our community. All housing helps. Then, um, you know, honestly, we've known about C U S D's structural problems and possible school closings for many years. Blue Hills, many of them have been on the list, uh particularly schools in in my neighborhood here. Uh, but a week ago, this wasn't even on our city's work program. This was agendized by the mayor at Liang's suggestion, I'm told, last Tuesday, not even a week ago. The timing of this agenda item on the evening prior to the election is grandstanding, and I think it's politicizing C U S D's financial issues in the interest of supporting certain candidates. And it's completely inappropriate from my point of view. And further, it's just inappropriate for us to be considering uh a possible purchase of a property that C U S D has expressed no intention to sell. It's, you know, uh, they would have to decide they want to sell it, and they would have to decide that it's pertinent to their needs, not ours. It's nor is it our job to explain to them how they manage the district, nor how they may choose to augment their funding with any measures. This is simply out of our jurisdiction of authority and disrespectful to voters who directly elect C U S D board uh members directly, right? So they have their own Brown Act meetings on these subjects, plenty of them, and we should respect that. If this item comes back to council, it should do so once C U S D leadership has conferred and has specific assets of the city as negotiated between Deb and Stacy. Right? This is, this is the appropriate path by which we could help this district. I I started uh some years ago, I suggested that we have regular meetings between school district, council, and so forth. So I care a lot about schools, but uh this this meeting tonight is a fiasco and not the way to handle this.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I kind of knew what I was gonna say, and now I'm gonna reorder and add a different one. I am so glad that we have five council members on this council, because there is a huge difference between the five of us that are on this council. Okay, we received a lot of emails, more emails on this topic in the last week than we have received in any other issue in the two years I've been on this council. I have a duty to be listening to the residents. Had had all those emails been about Lehigh, which is also not in Cupertino, Mr. Sinks, we would have put that on the agenda and listened to the residents with their issues and done everything we could to address those issues and the impacts on them. So, let's lower the blood pressure a little bit and say the residents sent the city council a huge number of emails about their concern on a very important topic in our community. Yes, we don't have direct oversight or even oversight of C U S D. I am so happy C U S D is in our community. I have three kids. That's a high priority. So, we're here to listen to them. I don't believe this is politicizing. Those emails chose to come to us in the couple, last two weeks because of their information from C U S D. because of their information from CUSD. It was not on campaign flyers. They received information from CUSD and they reached out to the city council at this point in time. And at least I am willing to be here until two o'clock in the morning, if I need to, to listen to the community and clearly tell CUSD, I will do everything I can to support CUSD. If we did not have COVID right now, I'd be offering community hall to CUSD for meetings with the community, just like we have offered it or had meetings at community hall for Lehigh. That's what we're here for. We're here for the community. I'm talking to the community. I'm here to listen to you. I read every email that I received. I printed out a whole bunch of them, being a paper person. So my main, my main thing is I understand that we have a challenge in our community with how CUSD is getting its money. I would like to point out that I think there's an error in Councilman Sinks's statement where he says the same amount of money is coming, no matter how many students. What I understand is that the money per student has two components. One is property tax and one is from the state. And the property tax portion is fixed. Whether you have five thousand students or twenty thousand students, the property tax portion is going to be fixed and spread across the number. The other half of the component is coming from the state based on the number of students. If I'm wrong, please help me. But I I think it's important that we be correct with the community and not make this sound incorrect. So I'll leave it with the fact that CUSD, anything that you feel I can do, let me know. I will do whatever I can to to facilitate one of the most important aspects of this community, and that's our schools. So thank you, Lori. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, the rest of the boards and everybody who makes our schools all that they are. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, John. And I would like to say, you know, we didn't we didn't time the six scenarios of school closures being released to coincide with any any election. This, this is what happened, and it was a tremendous number of concerned residents, as Councilman Willie pointed out, asking what the city of Cupertino could do to help. And especially related to the fact that there's a piece of land that the city would have liked to have and that CUSD isn't currently using. But, you know, CUSD, for a good reason, purchased that land in case Sedgwick needed to be expanded due to the large amount of additional housing being planned in that area. And I know, you know, Sedgwick is, I know Councilman Willie mentioned several times that when one of his children was enrolling there, he got like the second to last space that's there. It's not an underenrolled school. You know, they may need to expand it in the future. And I'm sure Deb and the district will discuss this and, you know, my idea was, oh, you know, let us buy it and use it. If you need it back in the future, we can collaborate and figure out, you know, you know, how how to facilitate that. We know that, you know, it's a temporary drop in enrollment for now, but, you know, in the, we've seen this before. We closed a lot of schools. Some of them were sold off, some of them were leased out, and then many of them were reopened because enrollment goes up and down. There's, you know, just happened at one point to be a big inflection point down, and then it then it bounced back up. So as I said, I, you know, Rod is correct. It was Councilmember Chow that asked to put this on the agenda. And based on the huge number of emails I got, I thought it would be appropriate to put it on there. There was no alternate agenda there. Let's see, Darcy, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I'll make a few comments on this. Yeah, no, I also think that it's perfectly appropriate for us to consider this. You know, that's in front of our community and the immediate. It's not just immediate, it's also very pressing. There are a lot of people affected here. We didn't bring it up. You know, nobody who's having accusations leveled at them for politicizing this, you know, began this topic, you know, if you're really following the arc of the conversation, these accusations were leveled at things like not supporting developments that would in fact make the enrollment problem worse. You know, and people don't do math, you know, and and maybe they should just pull out their multiplication tables and and start applying and adding, you know, and and that's the general problem here. We have, we have a shortfall. And we need to figure out how to go about making this up. We shouldn't politicize it. But this general issue has been ramping up very quickly. It's affected a great deal of our residents. They've reached out to us. I'm glad this council is acting quickly and being responsive. I think that we should ask our staff, you know, pursuant to the topic described here, and I will remind us what it is. The subject is, quote, "Consider investigating potential acquisition of CUSD property located on Finch Avenue next to Sedgwick, and discuss other potential steps to assist CUSD in light of potential school closures in Cupertino." Provide direction to staff on these issues. And so I think we're fairly well within the purview of of this this item. Certainly, let's collaborate. But, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic here. I'm a working parent. My wife's a working parent. You know, there are a lot of people in our position in the middle of this situation to be told that all these schools are up on the chopping block. I I I don't know about the timing. But I know that it's fallen in front of us, and it's fallen in front of CUSD as well as as Cupertino council. So I'd like staff to start working with CUSD staff on on the funding issue. I've been following the issue. I think potential acquisitions are fine, but we need to discuss them after an evaluation of the options, other actions we could take to support, the funding evaluations, you know, in a proper stepwise manner, I think are are appropriate. Let's, let's take a look at what we can be doing as a council. I think we have a strong voice if we were to have a well-considered statement of support and some recommendations. I think that could go a long way towards letting the the community, the community likes notice, you know, they they really didn't get a sense of, hey, you know, all of a sudden, there are twelve schools being considered here. And yes, I've been following these conversations. They went from more than a river of magnitude of four or something million dollars. And people like like notice, you know. I think it's about leadership that figures out a way to support our residents and parents in order to establish the trust necessary to get the support for the funding-related efforts. And in that light, I think that we should sit down and try to figure out how best we as a city can help open up spaces for our residents and perhaps partner with CUSD in order to perhaps secure them some ongoing funding for the benefit of of these spaces. So so what I would recommend from a specific staff-oriented perspective, and I think our personnel is really good. I think our our current majority of council has done a great job staffing the city. I think Deb, our city manager, as well as our new Parks and Recreation Director, should sit down with CUSD staff, try to figure out what we can be doing. And and it's not just a money conversation, it's the fact that CUSD has a lot of acreage all through the city. What can we be doing to serve the residents? You know, this is the middle of pandemic. I I commend CUSD, actually. You know, they haven't passed their parcel tax, but you know, having less money, you know, they have, they have a dirt track in Cupertino middle that's been open this whole time. You know, this fancy, very well-funded, you know, track over in in FUHSD, they locked their gates shortly after after the pandemic opened. I I have no idea whether the public's able to use it. So, you know, let's, let's work together. Let's try to get these spaces that are also important in this situation. You know, we're trying to keep our residents healthy. I think we've done a good job. But but truly, the collaboration is about sitting down, figuring figuring out what the needs are. Clearly, there are open space needs. They can be improved upon. And let's not bicker about dollars and cents and, you know, try to figure out what's fair and what what can, you know, create, create good work and create these really positive synergies going forward. So these conversations do need to happen. So I I would, I would ask that we direct staff to have those conversations happen. There could be ongoing funding, certainly. But, you know, my bottom line is this, when it comes to trying to extract money on the order of whatever, you know, two hundred, four hundred, seven hundred dollars a parcel, you know, out of our 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 reservoir out of on a square footage basis from our commercial properties, who, you know, frankly, some of them, all of them have done fantastically well. I mean, you you know, it's it, I don't think we lead with, you know, you're oh, so rich, you know, I I think you lead with, what can we be doing to help you out? Let us commiserate with the situation that you are in right now. It's not really, I don't think, a a a change in the in in the in the qualitative nature of the services you're delivering. And I think that's true for any of the staffs. I I think, I think we have very competent staffs. But I think it is messaging. It is about trying to empathize with the population and the demographics that you're serving and saying, look, you know, we 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 feel your pain, you know, what can we be doing? It's it's little things, you know, you know, we did a great job of reaching out to our residents for Halloween, you know, we set up the block leaders and, you know, we got all these, you know, little pumpkin baskets out to our our kids and families. I mean, can we, can we be doing things like that on a visible level? I think we can, you know, with our spaces. And so, but let's sit down, try to figure out how we can be first and foremost responsive to the residents and the parents. You know, and give them that comfort and then and then in concert, we can have this funding conversation over the course of however many months we're looking at. Maybe it's five, maybe it's six. But let's get it right. You know, it might be more like a year and five or six months, but I I have no, I have no reservations as to whether this community has the desire and the funding available to make up this shortfall. I just, I just think that we should be going about it in a somewhat more collaborative fashion.
Vice Mayor, are you making a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll finish up. And one that, one that really evinces that, that that kind of empathy first and foremost. I don't think that it requires emotion.
It does not. It's just providing direction to staff.
I'm, we're not going to instruct you to go and, you know, try to buy this property right now. But I I think we have laid a a nice groundwork for a conversation. And again, you you know, this didn't start with us, but I think we need to take it on right now. And so if we could get this back in front of us as soon as you can get it after having those initial conversations for an update, that would be a really good thing.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Um, so Leon, Leon, please be brief.
Sorry, I'd like to share screen to share something. First of all, can you see, you can see the slide, right? First of all, the in terms of the timing, initially, when we learned about that, we thought that CUSD will make a decision on the nineteenth of November. So people were very worried. That's why today was chosen, because there was no time. I really didn't think about whether it's before or after election. It didn't even come into my consciousness. And this is, this shows how underfunded we are over the years. We are the pink light. We are below the state average, and the gap was getting bigger, even though we are getting more revenue per student recent years. It's getting bigger. So I commend the CUSD staff and board for running on a show strength budget when we have extremely high rising living cost. But then we were able to get by because we overpacked our schools. And now finally, the school declined into a normal, healthy enrollment. It exposed the underfunding situation that was there before. So it's not caused by declining enrollment. It's just it was masked by it, and now it's exposed. As for the funding, actually, the ending balance back in two thousand and eighteen, when I was still on the board, was going to be thirty six million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. So we will have thirty six million dollars in the bank. Three years later, at that time, we were, even though challenging, still healthy. So at that time, we decided to give this the teachers seven percent raise, five percent one year, two percent another year. As a result, our ending balance was lower, become twenty-two million dollars. At the time, we kind of took a leap of faith because the new superintendent had plans to generate revenue with preschool and after school and other programs. So we will hope to add more.
So Leon, this is not the agenda item here to discuss
I know.
CUSD's financing.
Public needs to know, the CUSD didn't mention school closure until June, until October, actually. But they're
Oh, I I think the issue is just to tie it back to how the city can help or whether you think the city
Yes.
Right, yeah, you need to finish up with this. This is not on the agenda.
I'm showing why they need help, right? How much help they need. So by the March this year, they were still going to have ending balance of twenty-four million dollars. But in June, all of a sudden, in three months, the ending balance become ten million dollars. I don't know why. My suspicion was Gavin Newsom cut CUSD LCFF funding by ten percent. I think that's a root cause. So anyway, you don't need to see that. So this, this is enrollment chart. The actual capacity of CUSD is about sixteen thousand. We have been overcrowded. And now finally, we are within the good range. And the good range is fourteen thousand to sixteen thousand, so that you are not packing every classroom to the max. And like when many, when Public mentioned, if we fall under thirteen thousand, we'll become basic eight.
All right, please finish up.
Size, in terms of school size. Cupertino, Palo Alto schools are about four hundred to five hundred students. We are now about five hundred to seven hundred students. That's the norm, somewhere eight hundred. And now the new goal, the new goal of the new board was to pack schools to six hundred to eight hundred students. As a result, they used us in dark to say we want to close schools. So
Councilmember Chow, I think
This is enough.
This is not, this is not relevant information at this point, and there's nobody arguing that CUSD has budget issues. So I would respectfully request that you end that.
Okay, one idea that someone has proposed is, one school district has done is share part of a sales tax, a percentage of a sales tax with school district, given how severely underfunded we are. That was simply masked by more students than we are. But then now we are coming back to normal. We really need to fix the ongoing funding problem. Does this council have would even consider possibly sharing sales tax with school district? That's I'm wondering.
Well, that's not, yeah, that's not an agenda item right now.
That's an option that it's on the agenda. None of the options that I'd like to explore also.
I mean, you know, every city in the district would have to pass a sales tax then and share it equally.
I know, this tough. I know it's tough. I'm just throwing it out there.
And they would have to share it with all the school districts in their city, even in Cupertino, we're not all CUSD.
So I would respectfully request, if you could ask me to work through the options with Stacy, as previously indicated.
Yeah, that would be what what is appropriate here. We don't, right, as Lori pointed out, you know, CUSD has their own governing board. Although the sales tax thing has been, was brought up to me by a CUSD board member, the suggestion to pass a city sales tax and share it. So it is, it is somewhat relevant here.
Let me ask then, if we were to go sales tax, could CUSD even put that on the ballot, or they need all the cities involved?
I don't know how that works.
Heather, do you know?
So can we?
I mean, I think that's something that, like, you know, Deb and I can look into and come back and
Yeah.
on how it happened. But if it's the city's sales tax, then they can decide what they want to spend it on.
The schools districts usually don't put on sales tax ballots, so that's
Okay.
No.
Okay, so to be respectful to Lori and Stacy, I think if we could just, uh, I'll take the direction and, um, work with Stacy and talk to Heather and bring something back to the council as soon as I can.
Yeah, I mean, if you can bring it back the first meeting in December or try to, that'd be great, but I understand it might need to wait till the beginning of the year.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're pushed. So I certainly can have the conversations. I just don't know how thorough we can get.
You probably just give us an update of the December meetings.
And also how urgent they need this, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So you have the recommended action. Um, I don't think we have any more oral communications. Um, so it's council and staff comments, uh, future agenda items. I'll, I'll just go, um, this was not on my, um, committee assignments. I attended the opening of the restaurant that replaced Opio Zero, La Pizzeria. Excellent food. And then I attended another new restaurant opening, uh, Spice Club over where Amici's and the Korean Iran was. Uh, that's a new vegetarian Indian restaurant. So I'm really impressed that in these pandemic times that these, uh, restaurant owners are willing or being so brave to open new restaurants, um, at a time when they're so limited to the number of people they can have inside. Other events I attended, I think, yeah, I think that was it. Thank you. And I don't have any other future agenda items to put on right now. Um, Darcy, you have any other comments?
Um, yeah, I'm just kind of flipping through my calendar here, seeing what's worth, uh, sharing. Um, so, uh, I mentioned the, uh, the resident tax calculator. That's going to be very interesting. Um, the investment that occurred, uh, from 2000, 2014 that, that had a hearing, uh, on the 22nd. And I, I was really glad, um, that, that Christine Alfaro and Zach Corach was there, um, as well as Deb. Um, uh, by video conference. Um, so there was an attempt actually by, um, by the defendant to dismiss the case and the judge denied that. So that's, that's going forward. Um, I mentioned the audit, audit committee. Uh, well, oh, this past weekend, um, we had a cricket field opening, uh, speaking of CUSD, that happened at, um, the old Luther School. It's, uh, I think it's called Sierra. Now it's rented out to a private school. Uh, it's been for a while in Santa Clara. Um, so, um, the California Cricket Academy, um, was able to revive that field. It was, they did a great job. They, they, they put about a couple hundred thousand dollars in there. So that, that was a great, that was a great collaboration. Um, we had a mask donation, um, from our Taichung, um, Friendship City, uh, in front of, um, the library. So that, that was greatly appreciated. They, they donated to a number of our agencies, uh, public safety as well as senior center. Um, and then, man, I know you went to the Spice Club opening. I wasn't able to make that. Um, and I don't have other items to report out. I mean, I, I've been, I've been kind of thinking about a couple of agenda items. So I, I think, I think it's fair to give people a heads up on it, but I won't ask to place it on right now. Um, you know, I, I think it's wonderful that tonight we're, you know, finishing obviously at a very timely, uh, and relatively early time. Um, I'd like to try to collaborate with everyone and try to figure out what can we be doing to ensure that our meeting's in by midnight? I, I think that we can do it. Um, so I, I would like to start, um, you know, collective exploration to that. I'm also very concerned. I, I, you know, and again, I don't want to turn this into a political thing. Um, but there has been a lot of, um, there's been a lot of financial pressure on the media, you know, especially in, in these times, you know, we, we, we've done incredible things technologically, but at the same time, traditional media has been really suffering. And so, you know, there are a lot of, there are a lot of mechanisms out there and you sometimes wonder what is, what is advocacy, you know, and advocacy, advocacy is fine, getting paid is fine. Um, but what I would really like to know is if something is seemingly like some kind of a neutral purveyor of information, like a media source, I mean, is this actually some kind of lobbied information? Uh, Santa Clara has a lobbying registration law, the city of Santa Clara. And so I'd like us to look into that. I mean, I, I think it's, it's almost a timeless, you know, democratically, um, mandated, uh, kind of measure that we should be taking because it's so important to, uh, systemically. I, I don't want to turn this into, you know, an issue right now, uh, but I want to give you guys, um, kind of a, a signpost of what, what I'd like to look at. Um, you know, I'll probably bring it up before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right, thanks.
Oh, I did want to mention, and I forgot if, uh, on October 30th in Forbes magazine, there was an article about Cupertino and how thanks to our awesome IT department and our CTO Bill Mitchell, we were able, when the pandemic hit, we were planning for an earthquake, to be honest, then we got a pandemic instead. But we really didn't miss a beat in terms of our city operations. Uh, we moved online really well. Um, if a staff member didn't have a laptop or one that was fast enough to run Zoom, our IT department was out there providing it with them. And I know I talked to council members in other cities and another city in the East Bay, another well-off city, they said, oh, we had to cancel all our meetings because our IT department just could not get their act together. So they like missed a whole month just waiting for um, all their systems to come up to speed. So I'm really proud of our city and proud of Bill that we got that great publicity in, in the national magazine. So kudos to Bill. He got his 15 minutes of fame and we got some great publicity for our city to show, um, that, that, you know, we're a bunch of geeks, we're a lot of nerds, a lot of engineers, and sometimes that pays off and a lawyer too. Sorry, Darcy. So thank you. Um, next, who wants to go next? Um, Leon?
Okay. I didn't have anything, but since Darcy brought up the lobbying registration thing, I think that we have other things in our community that's like lobbying, but actually even worse. They pretend to be a neutral news source, but when they are pseudo news, that's controlled by special interest. And, but the public wouldn't know, given that Cupertino doesn't really have our, our own news. This is very damaging because, uh, the innocent public would not know this particular, I think there are two or three Cupertino today, uh, Cupertino matters, there might be more. How can the city maybe provide ratings or to actually help the public distinguish between actual news and news that's sort of like lobbying? They are actually lobbying for some people. But then without, without, they don't have, they don't subject to any campaign disclosure law. It's very concerning.
Okay, thank you. Um, John?
Okay, so, uh, uh, Mayor Sharp, you didn't, uh, mention that you were also at the Taichung Friendship City mask donation.
Oh, right, yeah.
You were front and center and Darcy and I were at your side, so to speak. But at any rate, I'll, I'll just say, uh, a small, uh, antidote about that is that they asked me to deliver the 2000 masks to the senior center. And wow, I, I saw that as an honor, you know, not work, but an honor. And so, uh, just so Deborah knows, I delivered those there. I actually, uh, put a, uh, uh, copy on the top so that clearly as they, uh, the other personnel come in, they know where it came from. They know what it's intended for. And, um, so that was great. And then, um, I'll just mention that I concur with, uh, Councilman, uh, Paul and, um, uh, Chow, that I really do feel strongly that we should be, uh, considering how to, how to bring truthfulness and integrity to our community. I, I mean, let us raise the bar. The, these deceptive techniques that are used these days have gone like high-performance race cars. And it's not right. The foundation for democracy is truthfulness. Be truthful, explain what, what you are proposing and let the people decide for themselves, decide who they, they, uh, would like to represent them, what measures are appropriate for their community without the deception and the, the twisting of words to confuse people. So I, I do think we should, in Cupertino, home of Apple Computer, we have the right, the ability to, to raise the bar and let the, let it grow from, from this, from this seed in Cupertino. So, yeah. Thank you.
What else, Dad?
Okay. And I would point out, you know, I agree with that, but remember, you know, these are for-profit companies, um, they basically say, you know, whatever they want, whether it's truthful or not, we don't have to like it.
Maybe we can say, okay, this company, we know their funding source is this.
Right.
And that company, they, they refuse to disclose their funding source.
Right.
And this is just potential future agenda items.
Yeah. Report on comments. Council member Sinks, do you have anything?
I think he's departed, unfortunately, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, um, Vice Mayor had two items. The second item has four. And, uh, is there a second for the first item to limit? To, might as well just do it, right? Right, Darcy? Uh, is there a second to try it?
Totally a lot of support for that second one. I mean, the, the midnight one, I mean, I, I think as a council, talk about it, you know, and it's probably more of a thing for, um, our, our retreat, you know, because you want to get those buy-in, right?
Okay, gotcha.
We talked about that endlessly about, you know, should we continue meetings to a second night or should we just keep going? And there's never been a good, you know, consensus on, on, you know, how to do that because
We can, yeah.
Can't always do two nights in a row, so.
City staff can provide some information from other cities that might work. We have some.
I mean, I do appreciate, I mean, these three or four AM meetings just, you know, it's not, it's not right.
And last time it was also, it was a very packed agenda. So I didn't even get to meet until very late. I see that CUSD starts their meeting at five. That actually helped. You can, you
Trying to be respectful of people with full-time jobs, right?
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Was there any, oh, I, we did council comments. Were there any staff comments before we adjourned?
No, that was a pretty healthy meeting. Um, I don't have any other comments other than I did attend the hearing and it was basically, oh, well, we gave the money back. Uh, so you should dismiss these charges and I have never received any money back. So I'm not sure why. Since, even if she gave it back, she stole it. So I'm not sure how that argument works. Darcy and I were kind of going back and forth on text about that, like what? So it was kind of a, yeah, and the judge just kind of summarily said, you know, no way. So
All right.
Yeah, it'll come up. I think it's in December again, uh, for at least setting up a date.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Bye.